Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November 8, 2021 Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now move on to the roll call members. Madam Clerk, we call a roll, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Kincaid.
He's excused.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Copeland.
Here.
Councilmember Wheat.
Present.
Councilmember Messenger.
Present.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the approval of minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any changes or edits in minutes? Okay. Would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion we approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second from Sierra. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those minutes are approved. All right, move on to old business. I don't have anything on my agenda. Is there anything from the council? Okay. New business then. Before we start, would, can I have consent from council to take the agenda out of order? Consent?
Yes.
Consent? Okay. First time up then will be declaratory resolution 2021-26, the preliminary designation of an economic revitalization area. And we have Molly Whitehead from the Boone EDC to talk about this.
Good evening, council. Molly Whitehead, Boone, EDC. For your consideration tonight, we have been working with Project Snack, as you have seen. The company is actually Catalina Snacks. They are a keto cereal. And I pass it around, but people are weird, right? About eating after one another now. But it is a keto cereal. Dick's okay with it?
Snacks?
Snacks. It's a keto snack company. Cereals, sandwich, cookies, we discussed. What other products?
Snack Mix.
Snack Mix.
Snack Mix.
And chocolate.
And chocolate.
Oh.
So they have been rapidly expanding over the past several years and have just outgrown their space that they have in another community, and so that's why they're looking to move to Lebanon. They will be subleasing part of the space that Perry Wholesale Grocers currently occupies. Perry will still, as I understand it, still be in town. And with this project, Catalina is looking at employing 120 full-time employees. Full employment will be by 2026, and an anticipated $5 million capital investment. As you know, we have a lot of food companies in Lebanon, in particular, throughout all of Boone County, but we really like this market because, generally speaking, snacks, snack foods in particular have been fast-growing for a while, but food's recession-proof. You still have to eat, or maybe as recession-proof as you might be able to get. And so we like being able to diversify the type of businesses that are here in Boone County with companies like Catalina. What we are recommending is a four-year, 20% step down on a personal property abatement. So that first year would start out at 80%, and 60, 40, 20%. And before you can even consider that, you do have a declaratory resolution to establish the economic revitalization area for that particular parcel, which is required by law. And then the declaratory resolution, confirmatory resolution, will be in front of you here in two weeks on November 22nd. And actually, Claire Colette, our Economic Development Manager, she'll be back at that time to walk you through those final processes. We do have a couple of representatives here from the company, Joel from Catalina Snacks and our KSM team representing them as well. Joel, you're welcome to come up if you would like to say anything, but he made the trip down here to just formally speak to all of you about your company.
Thank you, council. We're very excited about moving to Lebanon. We've been in business, we're about to enter our fourth year in business. And a couple of things that I'll mention about Catalina is we are the fastest-growing cereal brand in America today, faster than anything that Kellogg's has introduced or that General Mills has introduced or Post. And I know this is public record, so I wanted to make sure that they knew that as well. We believe that the keto-friendly space, which is low sugar, low carb, high protein, continues to be what consumers are looking for, and so we're looking for a significant expansion, which is why we're more than doubling our space as we move into the Lebanon area. We have a lot of products that are in our new product pipeline, so in addition to the chocolate that we mentioned, we have not launched that yet, but we're looking to put in a whole chocolate production line into the facility. And then we have a three-year pipeline of new products that we're going to be introducing. Today, you can find our products pretty much in every retailer across the United States except for Walmart, which launches in January. But if you go into your local Costco, you'll see large displays of that, and all of that production will be moving here. So we're very excited about the opportunity to come to Lebanon. We know the community well, and we hope we can continue to move forward, bring more jobs and more people into the city of Lebanon. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Molly?
I just wondered to see if you could pass that around so we could take a look and...
It's not been opened, so I will know.
Well, that's all right. I cannot, you know, if it gets open between here and there, I don't know. I can, you know...
You can ask something after if you want to. Any questions for Molly from the board?
I have a question.
Sure?
So I know that one of the selling points is promoting jobs, so are they closing the plant that they have in the other community, and are they bringing those employees to... Okay, so how many employees are they bringing to, with, do they know how many they're bringing with them so we know how many jobs it's really creating for Boone County?
That's a good question. Do you know when you're coming in? Technically, by our definition, just for the future reference, when I say new jobs, I mean new to Boone County.
Okay, okay.
But do we have a clarification on the number? Any... Forty-two will be brought in.
She asked the first question I was going to ask. The second question is, so if I understood, they're not closing the facility wherever they're at now?
They will be.
They will be?
They are.
Okay. Are they currently getting any kind of abatement or incentives that have maybe expired and now they're moving? Okay. Just got to ask.
Any additional questions? Okay. Rob, do you mind reading Resolution 2021-26, please?
Thank you, mayor and council. Resolution 2021-26 again is regarding the preliminary designation of an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain proposed personal property for tax abatement. Pursuant to the Act, this council may find that a particular area within the jurisdiction of the city is an economic revitalization area and may, by adoption of a resolution, declare such an area to be an economic revitalization area. Whereas this council desires to declare the area that's located in Exhibits A and also Exhibits B with the map to be made part of as an economic revitalization area, which property owners and lessees may make an application to the city for certain abatement of real and/or personal property for taxes. This council has received a written application that's filed on behalf of Catalina Snacks Incorporated, the applicant, for a personal property tax abatement pursuant to the Act. As Molly indicated, the applicant anticipates installing approximately $5 million of new manufacturing equipment and/or information technology within the area by December 31, 2026, in order to equip a food-grade production and distribution facility. The applicant has submitted to this council a statement of benefits personal property SB1 form that's set forth as Exhibit C and is made a part of this particular statement. The council has considered this statement and has conducted a complete and proper investigation of the area and determined that the area qualifies as an economic revitalization area under the Act. This council further determines that the area is now undesirable for or impossible of normal development and occupancy because of lack of development, succession, and growth, and several other factors that are defined in the Act. This council makes the following findings. The estimate of the cost of the new manufacturing equipment to be installed in connection with the project is reasonable for equipment of that type. The estimate of the number of individuals who will be employed as a result of the proposed installation of the new equipment can reasonably be expected to result from the proposed project. The estimate of the annual salaries of those individuals who will be employed can reasonably be expected to result from the proposed projects. The benefits described in the SB1 form can reasonably be expected to result from the proposed project, and the totality of the benefits from the proposed project is sufficient to justify a personal property tax deduction set forth herein, and that this statement is hereby approved. As Molly indicated, the proposed personal property tax abatement is scheduled out to four years in an 80, 60, 40, 20 matter that's set forth in Section 5 on Page 3. A public hearing shall be held at the next regular meeting of this council on November 22, 2021 at 7:30 p.m. There will be notices that will be provided for that hearing as well. And pursuant to the Act, a copy of this resolution shall be filed with the Boone County Assessor, and with furtherance that this Act will be filed in a notice with each of the taxing districts that this council has authority to tax, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
Yeah. Any further questions or discussion now the resolution has been read?
Yeah, I've got a quick one. I'm trying to wrap my head around this. This will be part of a building already existing, right? A sublet?
Yes.
So are we declaring the entire footprint of that building and its associated land as an economic revitalization area, or just the piece of the building they're going to utilize?
The entire parcel.
Okay. Could, okay.
Yep. Any additional questions? Any public comment at this time? Okay.
Yep.
Another question I meant to ask earlier. Have we had any other interest in that property before now that you know of?
So actually, we were not aware that they were looking to sublease some extra space, so I don't, I don't know. Uh-huh.
Anything else from Molly?
No, you're fine. Okay, thank you.
At this time then, I would entertain a motion concerning declaratory resolution 2021-26.
I move we approve declaratory resolution 2021-26.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second from Morris. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is adopted, and welcome to Lebanon Catalina Snacks. Make it forward with the next one, bud. All right. With that, we'll return to our regularly, our normal agenda. So Item A would be a food and beverage request from the Shalom House, Lisa Williams, and I'll turn these over to John. Introduce.
Let's...
Or again, Newton, your order if you want.
No, I don't want it. No, seriously, I don't want, I don't want.
Actually, I thought it stopped at the mayor. I'm sorry, we have someone speaking for Lisa tonight?
Right. Mr. Mayor and the council, I'm Michelle Thomas from the Board of the Shalom House, so I ask your forgiveness for this slight change to the agenda. Lisa Williams had a family event tonight, and so I'm here in her stead, so I hope that's acceptable to the council. Thanks for your time tonight. Again, I'm Michelle Thomas. I live here in Lebanon and have the great privilege and joy of serving on the Board of the Shalom House since 2018. And I'm here to make a request of the city council for $1,500 from your food and beverage fund to help with the program for the Shalom House. Most of you are probably familiar with Shalom House and our mission. We've been in operation in Lebanon since 2003 and a 501(c)(3) since 2012. We are a Boone County-based 501(c)(3). So our two primary programs are our hot meals program, served out of the Shalom House itself on Green Street, and the Shalom Kids' Stack Lunch Program, which provides take-home breakfast and lunch meals for schoolchildren in Boone County whenever the schools are on break. So the summers, the fall break, the holiday, Christmas break, and spring breaks. And in order to do that, we're a very volunteer-driven organization. We have more than 1,000 volunteers come through the Shalom House every year and partner with us to help serve the hungry in Boone County. So we have very strong partnerships with church groups, with community groups, with our schools, with businesses who send volunteers and make donations and make in-kind donations to help us in our mission to feed the hungry and build community in Boone County. So last year in 2020, just a few numbers. In our hot meals program, of course, with the COVID pandemic, we're not serving in our dining room, which is much our preference, but our hot meals are all served as takeout, and we also have delivery teams. So every Tuesday and Saturday when we serve hot meals, we've been serving more than, I read about 200 meals twice a week. And in 2020, we served 16,714 hot meals to our neighbors here in Boone County. Through our Kids' Stack Lunch Program, in 2020, for lunches and breakfast, we served 49,210 meals to about 4,900 children. So we have seen an increase in demand in recent months. The numbers for the program can be very hard to predict. They can be related to weather, they can be related to family income. With the kind of government help that was provided for many families during the height of the pandemic, we saw our numbers kind of going up and down in response to that. But we have seen very strong demand for the hot meals. And again, historically, probably 160 to 180 was a little bit more normal for our meals on Tuesdays and Saturdays, and we're routinely hitting 200 now. And we hope that means that people are learning about the Shalom House and wanting to come and be part of the program, but it also really speaks to a persistent need in the community for food, for food and community, because those are both part of our mission. So we are, you know, funded by donations. We're not a United Way organization. We have a couple of fundraisers a year, but we rely a great deal on community partners and individual donations to help our programs run. So the city council has been very generous to the Shalom House with this grant program in the past, and we ask for your consideration so that we can continue doing that. And I'd also like to invite the city council and the mayor to put together a serving team and come serve at the Shalom House. If any of you have had the chance to do that, you always leave feeling like your time was really well-spent, and you're exhausted. So are there any questions?
Any questions for Michelle this time? John, do you want to make a statement?
We met the council members, Sierra and Brent and I met with Lisa Williams on Thursday the 4th of November, and she made a very good presentation. All the information you provided this evening is even more than what she provided that night. So that was good information. Lisa did say that the request the last few months has been up approximately 9%, and it seems to be growing. She also wanted to let the council know that the cost of food now has gone up quite a bit with the pandemic and everything that's transpired. So that's another reason that they're looking at things like that. And she said, talked about the meals, they have no inside dining, they're open Tuesdays and Saturdays, Tuesdays 5 to 7, Saturdays 11 to 1. They used to have at least one Thursday a month that they don't do now.
Right. We're hoping to get back into that in calendar year 2022, but some of that, there are some X-factors there, but we would like to serve a meal in the Shalom House on the last Thursday of the month, as we did up until the lockdowns went into effect.
And they talked about the deliveries, and basically, you prepare the food inside the building, and when someone comes to the door, someone from the inside delivers it to the person that's outside, or they take it to their home.
Right, right. We have volunteer teams who do deliveries to about 65 people on Tuesdays and Saturdays, folks who are shut-ins. And we just passed our health inspection with flying colors as well, so we're happy about that.
Well, she also, Lisa added that they used to be under the care of Otterbine Church, and now that Otterbine is no longer with us, they gave the Shalom House the deed to the property, so they're in charge of upkeep on the property and anything else that goes along with it. So there's some good news with that, but also the upkeep is some added cost that they have to look at as well. But the Food and Beverage Committee has made a positive recommendation, they want to make it tonight to the full council.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I'm waiting for someone to make a motion for a donation.
Then I would entertain a motion concerning the Shalom House donation.
I'll make a motion. We give $1,500 from food and beverage funds to Shalom House.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second from Sierra. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved, and thank you for everything your group does for our community.
Great. Thank you very much for your partnership. We really appreciate it.
I will say that most of the members up here have worked at the Shalom House, and while we were at the meeting the other day with Lisa, we also volunteered and said we would try to put a team together. I attended the Parks Department meeting last week, and they're putting teams together for that as well. So I do know that the city, the city of Lebanon is stepping up to assist at the Shalom House. It is something that's very dear to us and very important to us and the community.
Thank you. Your partnership really means a lot, and I think a friendly competition among city departments to get some, to get some teams serving at the Shalom House is a great idea. I like it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is a food and beverage request from the Boone County Boys &amp; Girls Club. Katie Reisner. John?
Good evening. 52 years I'd never been in this room, and now I've been in here twice this month. I don't know if that's good or bad. And Rob Shine will be the Boys &amp; Girls Club Chairman for the Shalom House Day at the volunteering. I'm Katie Reisner with the Boys &amp; Girls Club of Boone County, and we have units in Lebanon, Whitestown, and Zionsville. We just had our third-year anniversary of a merged organization with all three units in the county under the Boys &amp; Girls Club of Boone County umbrella. We have been through a lot of growth and change, and as you all know, with the requests that you're getting, Lebanon and Whitestown are growing exponentially compared to other parts of the state, and we continue to keep up with that as well. The Lebanon Club serves meals to 55 kids on average every day, an evening meal in the summer. We serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and two snacks to all of our summer camp kids. In addition to that, we transport children to the school from the club in the morning and from the school to the club in the afternoon. We've got about 30 kids in the morning and about 55 to 60 in the afternoon that come every day. The funds that we are requesting will help those two programs, both the transportation and the food program, as was mentioned by several other people that have spoken tonight. We've seen an increase. Prior to the pandemic, we had about 65% of kids on the free and reduced lunch. We now have over 75% of kids on free and reduced lunch. Our budget is made up by our operating costs, it's about 45%, and our fundraising raises the additional 65%. My math might be quite right, but the fundraising part is 65%, and with that, it's mainly individual gifts, grants, and special events, which we are expanding our special event, which I spoke about a couple of weeks ago when we were here, is the Thanksgiving Day Run, the gravy chase. And we are excited that we just hit the 100 person registered today for that race, so we're hoping to have 250 to 300 people. While I was sitting over there, I just ordered more t-shirts, so we ran out of the gravy chase t-shirt. So I'd like to ask the council to continue your support. You're a huge supporter of ours during the food pandemic, or during the pandemic when we ran an emergency food program and served over 19,000 meals over 16 weeks. I ran that program firsthand, was there every day for the first 10 weeks of the program, so I knew the ins and outs of all of that, and we couldn't have done it without the support from you all and other donors, and we look forward to continuing this relationship and partnership.
Thank you, Katie. John?
Katie met with the board last Thursday as well, on the 4th of November, made a presentation. All the information that she gave us this evening is the same information that she gave us that night. All my notes that I was going to cover tonight, she's already tapped into them. So I will mention that with the holiday season coming up, I can only imagine that the members or the numbers are going to increase a little bit during the holiday season, so I think for all the organizations that are here tonight, it's, with the holidays coming up, this is a really special or a need for them to try and help as much as possible during the holiday season. So with that, our board made a positive recommendation, and I'd like to make a motion that we do $1,500 to the Boone, I'm sorry, Boys &amp; Girls Club of Boone County.
Okay. We have a motion for $1,500 support of the Boone County Boys &amp; Girls Club. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion is second from Keith. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Great, thank you.
One other thing I meant to mention is, we've started tracking our scholarships, and for 2021, we have scholarshiped 29 families and 51 children, and over $23,000 in scholarships that we've provided. So we're going to be tracking that forward so we can really know how much we are able to help those people in need. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have a food and beverage request from Capa Delta Phi, Joyce Douglas.
Mayor, city attorney, Rob, and city council, thank you for having me, and especially the Food and Beverage Committee. I'd like to say a big thank you for allowing us to meet with you. I'm Joyce Douglas. I'm co-chairperson of the annual. It's our 84th year this year, annual KDP, Lebanon Welfare League, LWL, Christmas Basket Program, where we assemble groceries from local groceries. We use the IGA, Kroger, and Aldi, and we do a meal in a box, which this year I just got alerted from Sue, and Sue Muncy, who also co-chairs and is our treasurer. She's been doing this for a number of years. Her mother did it before that. She just let me know we have to pay for boxes now, so that's another $80 out of our food money. But it is what it is. There's a supply chain problem, and also groceries have gone up. I just came from the grocery store, and everything's a good .39, .40 more than we paid last year. We fed 400, and I wanted to tell John, correction, 486 persons. 10 families were adopted out. We ask the public to always get in touch with Sue at 765-482-3299 if they would like to adopt a family and provide that meal. We do do that. KDP, Capa Delta Phi, it's a civic organization. We've been around for five decades. I've been a member for a very long time, and it's one of our favorite projects to do because it is the reason for the season. It started with, if anyone goes way back, John W. Jones, Henry Ullin, Jack, John Jones took over, his son. He retired in Florida. He asked our member, late Ad Green, to take it over in 1964, and we've been doing it ever since. So I appreciate anything you can do for us to help buy these groceries and offset our cost. We do fundraisers throughout the year, but 2020 seemed to blend with 2021, and so some of our fundraisers have not been successful, and some were not held due to this existing virus. So I really, really appreciate, because there is a great need in our community to help the less fortunate, and as you all know, we're all about helping children and families on a tight income. So I appreciate any help you can give, and I welcome any questions. And Sue extends her gratitude she was unable to be here.
Any questions for Joyce from the council?
I know it's kind of a long list. You gave it to me the other day. Could you just give them... Could you just give them a step of what is included in a box that you sent to a family? Because it costs between $60 and $70 depending on the size of the family, what they put into the box. But I'll let her kind of give you an idea of what's going to be in the box.
So when you're thinking about making your list for Thanksgiving, for us, because it's in a box, we have to condense all to, instead of fresh, canned, boxed, bagged. So if you think about the size, that's another thing. The price increased, the size diminished on a lot of the products. So we're having to buy double and triple of what we normally bought. Corn, green beans, cranberry sauce, large cans of fruit cocktail, mashed potatoes, boxed, cake mixes, icing, canned evaporated milk, large boxes of pudding, large boxes of Jell-O, egg noodles, chicken broth in the carton, stuffing mix, and pumpkin pie or plain pumpkin instead of pumpkin in the pie crust, which is usually sold out by the time we get the money to start shopping. We provide the pumpkin filling. We also provide meat certificates with the boxed food. And these get mailed out to the recipients. And they range in price from $20 to an individual to up to $40 to $50 for a family. Again, KDP adopts the two largest families that usually have between eight to 11 persons in that household. So we adopt the two largest. And we do sponsor out, but those sponsors are dying off. We're not, you know, they're family coming up behind them. The expendable income is not there, so our donations have kind of dropped off. We still get a lot. We still request a lot. Anyone can drop off donations. I always want to say Lamar and Lamar, 120 North Lebanon Street. You're able to walk in those donations or mail it to Sue Muncy. And that will, all that information will be in the Lebanon Reporter and online. That we will do a media blitz on that. But again, you can call Sue at 765-482-3299 if you'd like to donate a family or donate monetary funds to purchase the groceries. And again, we use, we shop local. We do the meat certificates at IGA. We do the canned and boxed between Aldi and Kroger.
Again, all my notes she covered, but I did want to remind everyone that they do buy local. They get all their products from here in the City of Lebanon. The numbers have increased, and as she told you, the price on the items has increased and maybe the size of the item has decreased. So it is a hardship. It is vitally important to assist with the families in need, especially during the time of the holidays and things like that. So we, as a Food and Beverage Committee, we made a positive recommendation to be brought forth tonight to the Lebanon City Council.
Okay. With that, we entertain a motion concerning the support of Capa Delta Phi.
Dollars to Capa Delta Phi.
Okay. We have a motion to approve $1,500. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Disposed? That is approved.
Thank you very much. And I always like to end with, if we didn't have this food and beverage tax, maybe we could not have so many requests for help. Just a thought. And I know you'll never end it, but just want to thank you guys and thank you so much for the donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Okay. John, is this the end of the request? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, for this evening.
Okay. All right. Next up will be item number, or letter E, Resolution 2021-24. This is an additional appropriation request from the Food and Beverage Fund. John?
Good evening, council. I would like to request $115,000 from Food and Beverage for park playground equipment and lighting fixtures.
Do you want to explain?
Excuse me. Oh, yeah. There are direct purchase for those. That is the playground. It's the all-inclusive playground to purchase the equipment. And then we will have it installed at a later time. Same thing with the lighting fixtures. That takes care of the poles and the screw mounts and everything. So that is basically what it's about. It is the lighting project that I've talked about forever and the playground, all-inclusive playground.
Any questions for John about this?
Okay, I will ask.
Okay.
We've discussed this quite a bit.
Yes, we have.
Is there any way to explain to me?
Yes.
How, why are we doing an additional for this money? Because I know we've designated a lot of money for the parks. Why are we doing this as additional? I'm just trying to understand.
That's fine. Good question. I think I've heard it quite often.
Sure.
Originally in 20, let's see, this is 2021, in 2020, at a council meeting, Dick Robertson said to set aside $1.2 million for park projects. And that also included DLZ, which was $395,000 for the trail expansion or the engineering for the trail site work. There again, let me see, there was also $750,000 bond, which that ended up being $538,000 that was going in. That was to cover several projects, which the council sat down with the park board back in 2020 and came up with a list of park projects that would like to be completed. You guys discussed it, came forward with Dick's, or Dick made a, it wasn't a motion, it was a conversation, I guess. I thought it was a motion to approve from Food and Beverage $1.2 million out of there. Fast forward to now, the food and beverage money has already been designated other places. I have to go to appropriate those monies. Those monies have already been appropriated in other places. So I think this is just a start. I will be back to the table for more. There again, it's a discussion that the council and myself have to have on how to complete these projects and where the funds come from. So this is just a start for the direct purchase of these two equipment purchases. However, there is site work to do. There is construction to do. I have contracts ready to go, but I need funding. At this time, we don't have that funding allocated. I will be coming back to the table to ask for those funds.
So just to add as well, so when, seeing we talked about those projects, that $1.2 million worth of projects, there wasn't an actual, we can't actually earmark money, right, for that, right? So it was kind of, they had to be shovel-ready before they came to ask for the funds, essentially. And as we talked about, you know, some of the, you know, when we did the park bond for the lighting, but also other park projects as well, and some of those projects were more shovel-ready than, it took some time to kind of work through the engineering and the lighting. So some of those funds of that park bond were used for that to complete a lot of the, if you notice, the new asphalt trail through Memorial Park, as well as the new paving area, some of those upgrades that John needed to do.
And the cabin.
And the cabin upgrades and things like that.
Renovation, which has been on the list, I think, 2008, 2009 also.
Right. So we, so we use kind of those monies to fund things that were kind of ready. So essentially, this is, and this is, will fund the, so we direct purchased the playground equipment and the lighting material. And those, both of those could arrive before the end of this year.
Yes.
And so because it's actual physical equipment, we want, we want to make sure that we can actually pay for those things. And because of those other projects we did, there is a shortfall of, between the rest of the remaining cash balance in the bond as well as the, in John's budget for cabin improvements. So this is not the full amount for all of those items. This essentially is what's left over after we use the other proceeding funds to pay for that. So that's kind of this, why this is ask is for tonight for this portion.
Perfect.
Okay. So let me follow up then. And I guess this, after we're sitting here discussing it, I guess my question is, and I feel like probably a common question, we wanted to give, we earmarked or kind of rolled a tab, so to speak, for parks.
And the conversation that he said he said to set aside, and unfortunately, that didn't.
That's not a legal definition, but that's our intention.
There was no motion made, so it was not designated to anything. And appropriated at that time.
Right.
And carried over to 2021. So there were some legalities with.
Sure. And I understand. That's, that's not a problem. I guess this is where I've realized what the question is, is we pledged $1.2 million. So where are we at on $1.2 million?
I will be trying to identify. There again, I don't hold purse strings to the council.
Okay. Well, I'm saying to anybody who can tell me where we at.
I'll tell you. So, you know, the $1.2, they included the design for the trail. That was funded, right? That's obviously moving, that's going out to bid here in the spring, or later this year, maybe?
Was that the 395?
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's been taken care of. So then this, also the, the park bond, it was another called $550,000 or so applied towards that. And then there will be this request, and then there's about another, John and I were talking today. It'll be about $600,000 that we, that I'm going to propose. We use American Rescue Plan money for the actual install of the playground and for the lighting. So like, that's kind of the next one coming after this. So we are, we are making good progress toward that. You know, I think with the way, with essentially with the funding we've gotten from the federal government, using it to support tourism in our community, which is essentially is our parks, something we can use the American Rescue Plan money for, which is kind of where we're kind of targeting some of those.
So basically, we were spending the bond money first, basically.
Correct.
Okay. And Mia is sitting there dying to tell you that we don't set aside $1.2 million. You know, she's got the note that we wanted to do that. But for him to ask for $1.2 million, he has to come in and make an additional request. So it was waiting for John, when he needed the money, to come in and make the request.
Right.
And so now we, now we get down to the projects, we need to figure out how much he needs. And then we need to make that request because we've got, if you remember in next year's budget, we've got funding set aside for, to match the grant money, okay, also. And we can also use, we've decided that, and Mayor and I had a discussion about this too, because we're at a budget time, we had these numbers, we kind of panicked, whatever, thinking we don't have enough in food and beverage. Then that's when we realized we could use part of our funds because in touring dollar, or for touring.
Tourism.
Tourism, for tourism, you could use that to help take care of, like this type of equipment, these type of projects for one, the park, as well as the trail. So either one, how it falls into the need, when it's needing, will determine where we take it out at. Right, Mia?
Yes. I do want to add, I have a food and beverage spreadsheet that I've created that tells what we've committed to. If you guys want to see that, I can show that to you.
Yes, absolutely.
Send us that. Thanks.
That's, that's my concern. I just want to make sure that we're being good stewards. And if we said we want to give the park $1.2 million, in two years, we suddenly realize, oh, we've spent $3 million. I just want to make sure because there are so many moving parts. And there's money coming in, there's money going out, there's money being pledged, which is not a legally binding thing. I just, that's my only concern. We want to fund the parks. We love our parks, and they're a very important part of our community. We're just trying to be good stewards and make sure that we're all in agreeance about how much we are spending, regardless of what's coming in and going out.
And both of these projects were on John's list, so to speak, right? So that's, so that's kind of where we're working towards all this.
The list is right down from the park, when the council sat down with the park board. Those were decisions made. You asked, what projects do you want listed? They listed them. You said, we'll fund these, these projects. And there has been an additional since. We are moving the trail through the old Conservation Club, the Conservation Pond. The fence will need to come down, clearing the trees. Our personnel is not enough to get it done in the amount of time that we need, so that will be an additional. So there are moving parts all the time in the Parks Department with as busy as we're getting. So there will be some other things that might have been at the bottom of the list that will jump up to the top. We didn't get it accomplished, it would be another five years before we'd even get close. And this needs to get done prior to the trail that will be moving in. So there will be some changes as we go along, but.
Sure.
Yeah. As far as that, it's still under, way under the $1.2 million that asked originally. That was, the process took a little bit more time. We're doing some work in-house, taking down some of the old lights, things like that, to cut costs too. So I want you to know that we are being frugal with every dollar, tax dollar that we have. I think you all know that.
We know that. We absolutely know that. We're, I guess, my point of view is it's almost like we just need a tote board. Okay, we're, we've spent this and we've got this much left. And, you know, we can appropriate more money, that's fine. But we just got to know after our commitment where we're at on that. So there's been a lot of confusion going back and forth. So again, I want to reiterate, we completely support the park and we support what we said, our commitment of $1.2 million. I just want to make sure we all understand where we're at on the, where the piggy bank stands.
And I hope the confusion didn't come from me. If it did, I apology, my apologies. But the park board wants to appreciate and thank you for all the funding that you've done and the improvements that you've made for our community.
And the goal is to, you know, we're moving these projects forward and, you know, as different, you know, as the American Rescue Plan money was given to us, right, that's became, it's a different funding source. And so I think we're still going to, we're still getting, working towards the total amount, right? Just where the sources come from. Because also, when we talk about the $1.2 million, we didn't know about the next level trails grant at that time either. Or that was kind of, had been put on hold. We didn't know that was coming back. So that kind of shuffled things a little bit for us too with the Food and Beverage Fund. So, but we're all marching in the same direction in this stuff.
Yeah, because at the time, the trails grant was on hold.
Correct.
You know, they didn't start it to run the first year.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, I, I think it's, as we're talking here, I think it's really important that even though we have that target, whatever it was, that when we do talk verbally, we say this appropriation is for that target area. Because I think sometimes we forget that language. And that can lead to confusion.
Well, and that's where.
This type of discussion clears that up.
Yeah. And that's where we want to make sure that, you know, it was, again, it was great we had the conversation about the $1.2 million, but it's hard for us to say, to throw John a $1.2 million check, like, that's a lot, right? So he kind of has to bring these to us as the ready. You know, these two projects are now ready, right? We've got, you know, the lights have been ordered, the paracoma has been ordered. It's going to come in. As soon as it comes in, we're getting the bill. We're going to make sure we need to pay for it, right? And that's kind of why we need this additional.
COVID, again, comes into play, a lot of contractors, things like that, the bid process, and being as frugal as we can. But yeah, I totally agree, and you said it earlier. There was shovel-ready projects ready to go. The bond issuance was there. Rather than coming and asking for appropriations at a food and beverage, it wouldn't make sense when there's ready available, even though that was set aside for lighting slash park projects. It just made sense to go ahead, get the shovel-ready projects done at that time. I hope that helps.
John? Any other questions, comments, discussions from council? Okay. There is a public hearing on this. I will have the resolution read and we'll open it for public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Resolution 2021-24, again, is for an additional appropriation. It has been determined it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. This resolution is to appropriate funds for park lighting, playground equipment, and tree clearing. The following additional sums of money will be appropriated out of Fund 471, and that is in the amount of $115,000.
The resolution's been read. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2021-24. If you need a public comment, please step forward. Okay. Seeing done, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2021-24. Any additional council comment, discussion?
The request is for the lighting in the playground. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, the, the tree clearing was in there, but that's not what it'll be.
That's why I asked the question.
Yep, but yeah, that's.
Thanks.
And also to clarify too, we will be holding the other additional appropriation later because that's not, I'll talk to her once you talk about this one. But any additional comments on 2021-24? Okay. I would entertain a motion then concerning Resolution 2021-24.
2021-24.
If the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second from John. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. That is adopted. Thank you, council. Disposed? Okay, that is adopted. Thank you, council.
Myself and the Parks Department and the Parks Board, thank you all very much for all your support. Again, thank you.
So speaking of, as mentioned earlier, so Resolution 2021-25, this would have been an additional appropriation request to actually fund the install of the playground equipment and the lighting that we just have now approved the purchase of. It would have been requested out of, or it's being requested out of the American Rescue Plan money. But as we reviewed the ordinance, so it was noticed for tonight, but as we reviewed the ordinance, we need to have a written plan adopted before we actually appropriate any of those funds. So essentially, we will be working before our next meeting to have that actual written plan with some of those first types of projects that I think during our working sessions, we've all kind of agreed upon as priorities, put those in the plan. That plan can be amended later, always, too, right? So it's, it can be a living document, but we want to need an additional, an initial plan adopted that will include these projects. And then once we have that adopted, then we can do this additional appropriation. So I would like a motion to table Resolution 2021-25 at this time, and then we can take that up then at our next meeting.
So moved, Resolution 2021-25. I move to table.
Second. There is a motion, a second, to table. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Okay, that is put on the table, and we can take that up at a later meeting. That concludes what I have for new business. Is there any from council? Any public comment, discussion? Okay. We'll move on to claims then, and we're going to entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Make a motion, we pay the claims.
We have a motion to pay the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Any announcements from council?
The motion adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? All right, we are adjourned. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, November 22nd, at 7:15 PM. Have a great night.